Welcome everyone to Lincoln City meeting for April 26, 2021. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that the number, there's a copy of the Opens Meeting Act which is posted in the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items first, items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register, sign in at the table located in the lobby. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of the organization represented by such person unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. Our new language in our new Opens Meeting law. Anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant may make one short rebuttal after all the speakers. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and organization, whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. After all the public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. And on the second last Monday, which is today of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue that's not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Hope that's all clear, everybody. Clerk, please call the first item of business.
If you still wish to appear in person on an item on the agenda, you may come to the County City Building at five 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 South Tenth Street. Limited seating is available in the council chambers. Testifiers are asked to wait in the Bill Luxford Studio or in the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you have finished speaking, you can exit the chambers through the door to immediate left. On our first item on today's agenda for April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, we have sections one and two of our consent agenda.
Is there anyone wishing to come forward on sections one and/or two? Anybody who would like to come forward? Is everybody out in the hallway that would like to come forward? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna vote on our consent items.
Item one A is reappointing Greg McCown, James McKee, and Gregory Newport to the Historic Preservation Commission for terms to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Washington. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item one B is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on short-term investments of idle funds during the month ended February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis? Motion carried seven zero. Item two A and two B was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Ward. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay. Moving on, we've got public hearing for resolutions.
Item four A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for April first through April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there anybody who would like to come forward to speak on new impending claims? Going once, going twice, okay. Okay, move on to the next item.
Item four B is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Lincoln affirming the city's commitment to be a diverse and inclusive community free from racism.
Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
Yes, I'd like to take a moment to speak on this resolution as the introducer.
Okay.
This issue, this resolution is personal for me. My sister-in-law and her wonderful family are Asian-Americans. Our next-door neighbors are Chinese. My dear friend in my book club is Chinese-American. Because this is personal to me, I hope that each of us make it our personal responsibility to prevent the spread of misinformation, condemn violent acts of, in any form, to support all fellow community members, and to reject stigma, hate, and bias in all form. This resolution of support for all those in our city of Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage, AAPI, is long overdue. The group Stop AAPI Hate started tracking hate crimes against Asians since last March twenty twenty and has recorded nearly three thousand eight hundred incidents, including harassment, shunning, and physical assault through February of this year nationwide. The horrific mass shootings in Atlanta targeting Asian women is one such example. The most recent attack captured by a nearby camera happened just this past Friday evening in New York City. An assault on a sixty-year-old man that was brutally assaulted with repeated kicks to his head. This is shocking, nauseating, abhorrent, and unacceptable. Any hate crimes will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. This resolution is needed to raise awareness of these incidents of hate and violence against those in our community and across our nation. Our Asian community here in Lancaster County makes up five percent of our population. This diversity and richness of culture and heritage is an asset to our city that we are proud of and one of our greatest selling points of being a vibrant, inclusive, and tolerant community that is both welcoming and supportive. I'd like to read an email from my sister-in-law Janet Chung, who is not able to be here. And she's the type of person that has always kept whatever slights or comments to herself as she's unable to join us. She shares with, "In July of twenty eighteen, I was volunteering with candidates for the midterm election. I tweeted about getting people to vote and to encourage others to vote. Someone replied, 'Excuse me, Ms. Chung, but are you even allowed to vote in the United States?'" Another replied, "Yeah, I wonder." She says, "I was upset that someone would question my right to vote because of my name and photo. I was born in the United States. My parents moved to Lincoln so my father could teach at the University of Nebraska. Lincoln has benefited from a diverse population of faculty members and researchers from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln and higher education institutions located here in our city. Many AAPI are physicians and working in the healthcare industry. Asian friends have commented about increased sneers and slights while out in the community. For Lincoln to achieve the status as a welcoming and belonging community, we need to do more than just recite platitudes. We need to demonstrate intent at the highest levels. Your actions as elected officials speak to the importance of embracing diversity and denouncing racism. I am emailing in support of Resolution twenty-one R dash one-five-one, which proclaims the city's renewed and ongoing commitment to be a diverse and inclusive community free from racism so that all who live and work in and visit Lincoln feel welcomed and to stand together in solidarity with our Asian-American and Pacific Island neighbors. Please vote in support of this resolution."
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward to speak on this item? Come on up.
Pardon my, removing my mask here, I find it really difficult to enunciate without, you know, with a mask on, even though I teach all the time. Thank you so much for allowing me to address the council. My name is Gary Ewen. My address is thirty-four fifteen Grimsby Lane, and I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution. Now, I'm not here today to represent any particular Asian ethnic group or any particular Asian organization. Now, I'm a long-term, a longtime resident of Lincoln, and I describe myself as being American first. American first, and then also a proud son of a Chinese family. I grew up in California and then came to Lincoln thirty years ago for a university position. And I'll let you know that coming here to Lincoln, I experienced the newcomer experience that all other newcomers experienced coming to the United States. So coming to Lincoln was like coming to a new country. And what was new about coming to Lincoln was the fact that I encountered just absolute ignorance about who we were as Asian people. Now, that's understandable considering the fact that there were so few Asians here in, here in Lincoln. But what was terribly troubling was the fact that despite the fact that I spoke, dressed, and acted what I thought was very American, looking at my face, I was treated with racism in various degrees. Those degrees included very subtle acts of racism, such as total disregard or disinterest in terms of who I was, or people viewed me with suspicion. And then other levels of racism included taunts hurled at me while I would cross O Street walking downtown. And some of the very overt cases of racism that most people don't even realize occurred here in Lincoln was I would walk into a local restaurant and be refused service. Now, that was thirty years ago. And I'm happy to say that things have changed over those last thirty years. And a large part of that change for me personally was the fact that perhaps I gained a thicker skin, but also with the, with the increase in the Asian population here, and also the general change in the social climate within this city, that there was more acceptance of newcomer Asians and that we Asians would find a welcome home here. So I would say that overt acts of violence really were as rare as our records would seem to indicate. But on the other hand, I would tell you, and other Asians will tell you, that the subtle acts of anti-Asian racism occur all the time. They persist. And as I said, I deal with that because I have a thick skin, gained over thirty years of experience over here. But what is troubling for me personally is to see the newcomer Asians having to cope with this. They haven't, they haven't acquired those coping skills yet. They don't understand the system. And what also troubles me is to see the young Asian-American people who grew up here in Lincoln wondering, "What is this all about? I'm American, but why does, why am I treated differently because of the look of my face, the slant of my eyes, or the fact that I'm short and have dark hair?" So racism still occurs here in Lincoln, but of course, everyone knows that things have gotten really bad in the rest of the country. So there is very much a tremendous fear in the Asian population that anti-Asian sentiments here in the city could easily escalate into anti-Asian violence. So I'm here today to implore the City Council to adopt this resolution. By adopting this resolution, my expectation isn't that the City Council will provide preference to us Asians over and above what all other people here in Lincoln deserve and are accorded. But I'm asking the City Council, as representatives of all people here in Lincoln, to send a very important message to us Asians here in the city. And that message, one, is that the people of Lincoln will listen to us Asians, listen to our voices, even though for most of us, our voice is very, we are very soft-spoken, very polite, but please hear our voices. Please don't be indifferent to the hurt that we're trying to express, the fear that we're trying to express. Another message that the City Council can send to the people of, to we Asian people here in the city through the passing of this resolution, that that message is that we will be accorded the protection against violence, against racism that all other people are accorded. And the last message that you can send us, the very important message, is that Lincoln will continue to be a welcoming home that we can live for the rest of our lives and our children can live. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming down. Who else would like to come forward and speak?
Dear Chairperson McGinnis and members of the council, good evening. My name is Zeke Rouse. I am a senior at Nebraska Wesleyan University, the brother-in-law to a member of the AAPI community. Tonight, I'm also an intern representing Nebraska Appleseed, address nine-two-zero O Street, Suite nine forty. Nebraska Appleseed is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to justice and opportunity for all Nebraskans. For years, we have worked closely with community partners across the state to build inclusive, welcoming communities where everyone knows they belong. We know that we must work together to ensure our shared future, purpose, and prosperity. Resolution two-one R dash one-five-one is an important step toward ensuring our state is committed to building strong, inclusive communities for all Nebraskans. We are strongest together. Our communities are strongest when everyone feels safe, valued, and respected. The Asian, Asian-American, and Pacific Island population in Lincoln is growing and contributes greatly to our community as business owners and faith leaders, artists, students, teachers, and in many other roles. Unfortunately, our Asian and Asian-American friends and neighbors are also experiencing increased discrimination related to the pandemic, making this resolution timely. Promote belonging for all who live in Lincoln. It is important and impactful when community leaders such as yourselves speak out, and it is meaningful and necessary to publicly reject the spread of misinformation and to condemn violence, hate, and bias. Thank you, Councilperson Raybold, for bringing this resolution, and thank you all for your commitment and willingness to take a stand against hate, bias, and violence. And we urge you to pass this resolution unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward?
My name is Christy Yang, spelled C-H-R-I-S-T-Y-Y-A-N-G. I am a resident that lives in the near-south neighborhood of Lincoln, and I am here to speak in support of this resolution. As an Asian-American woman who was born and raised in Nebraska, I feel so strongly about what is happening in our country with the overwhelmingly increase of hate and violent crimes toward Asian-Americans. I am in support of Resolution two-one R dash one-five-one because it feels so personal. When I see these videos of our elderly getting stomped on, spat on, punched, I feel angry ever imagining that happening to my parents. When I first heard of the murder of the sixth Asian woman in the Atlanta spa shooting, I feel disgusted thinking that could happen to me. And I understand these awful events are happening in other cities, but there have been hateful incidents happening here in Nebraska. In February, there was an explosive device that was detonated outside the Nebraska Chinese Association in Omaha. In Millard, an Asian neighbor walking his dog was verbally harassed and chased with their car. Thankfully, he hid and nothing happened, but they never found out who that was. It's the covert racism happening with my friends who attend U N L, having to relive their trauma and speak about what is going on in their classes or workplace because they're the only Asian-identifying person present. It's my parents asking if I'll be okay walking outside on my own or going to the grocery store by myself because they're afraid of someone who will attack me. So as a Lincoln resident, I want all of us to do better in continuously having these difficult conversations and addressing and combating all types of racism, intolerance, and xenophobia. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Councilman Raybold.
Yes. Could you, on your way out, write down your address for us? There's a new regulation by our Opens Meetings law. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Dustin Altman. I am here to represent the Asian Community and Cultural Center. That's one-four-four North Forty-Fourth Street, Suite A here in Lincoln, Nebraska. Like I said, I am here to represent not just the center, but I'm also here to represent my own personal story. My grandmother came here from Japan, so I am white-passing even though I am twenty-five percent Asian. With that being the case, I've seen throughout my years, when I was younger and when I was older, a lot of racism happened. A lot of people say that, "Oh, there's no racism here in Lincoln. That's not happening with Asian-Americans." I've seen it. I've seen it my whole life. The fact that we have leaders who will say that just because somebody is born a certain way, that they're the reason why this big pandemic has happened, is disgusting, it is hurtful, it's causing fear in the hearts of those who want to point a target on others, and it's causing fear on those who the target is on their backs. For me, having an Asian mom, it scares me. It scares me of wondering what's gonna happen with her if she's out late at night. Thank God, she happened to retire here just about a week and a half ago, which I'm so thankful for, but I was worried if she was working at nighttime, what was gonna happen? It's to say, what would happen? Nothing like Atlanta would happen, but I don't think anybody expected what was gonna take place in Indianapolis, what was gonna take place in Atlanta was gonna take place, and it could happen here. So with that being the case, with everything that's gone on since Atlanta, one of the things that has been a lot of fear is the fact that we have to put on the face of normalcy, acting like everything is okay when it's not. Deep down, we're feeling a lot of struggle when we're not doing okay. But a majority of people are able to walk around not needing to worry about it, go into a supermarket, and they're okay. For us, that's not the case. Again, I'm white-passing, but still, it's deep inside my blood of what has taken place with that. So knowing that I have a community that I've invested in for all these years, that I pour into, that my kids are being raised, that my mom has invested so much of her life into, that has our backs, that are there for us, that we don't have to necessarily put on the face of normalcy, but we could just be us and embrace that, and knowing that people could be there to protect us in case anything happens, means a lot. So I'm here, of course, in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to come forward at this time?
I was planning on coming here, on Laura Rousher, at twenty-four-eleven South Fifty-Eight Street, on a different topic. Could not find anywhere what this was about. Searched the website, could find any, you know, what this resolution was about. And I'm here to say, I'm against a resolution. Anything that would keep us separated in any form whatsoever, a resolution isn't going to bring us together. Opportunities to associate with one another, freedom to gather together. We have dear friends of all ethnic backgrounds and all colors. We're not supposed to have people coming into our house, not in group form at all. That needs to be changed. And a resolution to say a certain section of people need extra or different protection is wrong. We all need to be protected. I feel the same thing for the elderly group. And you could all say the same thing for many different, diverse people here in our city. This is a wonderful place, and I'm sad to hear that these people feel like they're sectioned out in any form. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward to speak?
My name is Sean Truckey, forty-nine twenty-five Thomas Brook Lane. And in reading through this resolution, there are some things that I feel like that just simply must be pointed out. I am against it, perhaps maybe not for the reasons that one might think. The resolution specifically mentions false narratives, yet propagates a few of its own in the process. The first false narrative is that of xenophobia around the coronavirus. I really don't buy this, this particular false narrative. It has always been common to name viruses from where they originated. Consider this partial list: the Spanish Flu, Middle East Respiratory Syndrome, Ebola, Guinea Worm, West Nile Virus, German Measles, Marburg Virus, Lassa Fever, St. Louis Encephalitis, Lacrosse, Encephalitis Hantavirus, Ross River Fever, Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever, Lyme Disease, Norovirus, Zika Fever, and the list would go on and on. This resolution appears to be a political messaging ploy designed to push the demonstrably false narrative that it is somehow racist to acknowledge that COVID originated in China, that the Chinese Communist Party, through their lies and cover-up, allowed it to become a global pandemic. I believe Nebraskans know the difference between blaming the Chinese people, especially those in our community, and blaming the corrupt Chinese Communist Party. The second false narrative spread here and throughout our society is that the shooting in Atlanta was racially motivated. The facts tell a different story. Three of the nine shot were not Asian, and one was a man. FBI Director Chris Wray stated in an interview with NPR, quote, "And while the motive remains still under investigation at the moment, it does not appear that the motive was racially motivated," end quote. And Cherokee County Sheriff Reynolds stated, quote, "The indications right now, it may not be. It may be targets of opportunity," end quote, when asked if the shooting is racially motivated. Truth matters, and anyone propagating the false narrative that this horrible crime was racially motivated, despite all the evidence to the contrary, is only fanning the flames and trying to stir up- and trying to stir up racial division. The third false narrative is that we are seeing this massive uptick in hate and violence against Asian people in our city and state. And clearly tonight, we've heard some very compelling examples, and I don't doubt that there are examples of that. I don't think any of us probably doubt that. But is it really the massive spike that we are being led to believe? You know, I've asked a lot of people for specifics. I usually don't get any specifics. Thankfully, there were some specifics given tonight, and I appreciate that. And I admit that I'm only one person, and again, I have no doubt there are examples out there, but I just, it does not compute with what I'm seeing in my neighborhood. And I have, you know, many neighbors of various Asian descent, and they're very valued members of our neighborhood. So I guess I'm just not, I'm not seeing that. And I also believe that it does not compute with the Lincoln Police Department crime statistics. Asian victims accounted for 1.7% of 2020 incident reports, down from 1.8% in 2019, and Asian victims accounted for 1.6% of 2020 violent crime, down from 2.1% in 2019. Now, it just seems that if we were to see this major uptick of hate and violence against Asians in our community, that we would see at least a slight increase in the stats provided by the Lincoln Police Department, when in fact, we are actually seeing a decrease. And clearly, none of this is acceptable, but again, truth matters, the facts matter. We have to get past the need to make everything about skin color in our society. This is a dehumanizing and reductionist view of the individual person. People should not be classified by their intersectionality in which groups they fit into, but rather, they should be valued as unique individuals and how they contribute to society. Sadly, I believe there are many voices in our society that seek nothing, to do nothing but divide people on race, and want to make race the dominant factor in all areas of life. We will never get to where we need to be if we listen to those voices. So I believe this resolution, while possibly well-intended, is severely flawed, as I pointed out. For this reason, I believe the council should vote down the resolution, and if desired, craft a new resolution that corrects some of these flaws and contains language that will better bring this community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward at this time to speak on this item?
Roy Helm, 2750 South 13th Street. I feel compelled to speak up to this and to some commentary. I, as a white person, I have always experienced privilege, and I've never had to be concerned about the color of my skin or how I might be treated because of the color of my skin. And I think it's important for all of us to recognize and acknowledge the systemic racism that exists in this country, even though we purport to be non-racist, non-white supremists, that we view everybody equally, because it is so, that racism is so ingrained in our society and in our government that we have to acknowledge it, and we have to take responsibility for it, and we need to reach out and assure all people, all folks of all races, and, you know, in this instance specifically, the Asian population, that yes, you are included, you are important, and these things do happen. The statistics from the police department are about violent crimes, but that has no bearing on the personal interactions, the looks, the leers, the commentary, the derogatory remarks. It's, the resolution in and of itself is symbolic, but it's an important symbol. It's an important language, and I hope that we all can view people as individuals without looking at the color of their skin or the shape of their eyes, or the sound of their voices. We have such a long way to go, and I know I have a long ways to go, but it's important. We are all human beings. We're not just Americans, we're human beings, and we need to be able to treat each other with dignity and respect, and I hope that you all will support this resolution because it means a lot to all of us. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward to speak on this item at this Seeing none, we can move on to vote on resolutions. Madam Clerk, do you want to call 4A?
4A is accepting and approving the reports of new impending claims against the city for April 1st through April 15th, 2021, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second by Councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 4B is a resolution of the City Council for the City of Lincoln affirming the city's commitment to be a diverse and inclusive community free from racism, introduced by Raybold. So moved.
And moved in second by everybody, no, by Councilperson Washington. Yeah, any comments?
I have a request. Could you read the resolution, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
That would be great.
Whereas Lincoln is dedicated to honoring its diversity, including our residents of the Asian American and Pacific Islander AAPI community, a group that has contributed and continues to contribute to our country's progress, culture, and success. And whereas, beginning in 2020, there has been a documented regional and nationwide trend of increased discrimination, hate, and violence against Asian Americans from young adults to our most vulnerable elderly exacerbated by false narratives and xenophobia around the coronavirus. And whereas, these reprehensible displays of hate have gone, have often gone unnoticed and unreported, perpetuating a model minority myth that Asians will be complacent and stay silent even when targeted and harmed. And whereas, hate, violence, and bias are not accepted in our community, especially when targeting or scapegoating individuals based on their race or identity. And whereas, the City of Lincoln remains committed to our vision of not just welcoming the world and recognizing our diversity as a key strength for our character, but also to being a community in which everyone has a sense of belonging. And whereas, each of us has a personal responsibility to prevent the spread of misinformation, condemn violent acts in any form, to support all fellow community members, and to reject stigma, hate, and bias in all its forms. And whereas, there is an urgent need for all of us to unite and come together to support the AAPI community and report incidents of hate and bias. Whereas, in the coming months, the City of Lincoln will enhance its efforts and opportunities to engage and combat this virulent type of racism intolerance and xenophobia, and to protect all members of our community from crimes, especially those based on the race or identity of our residents and visitors. And whereas, the recent crimes in Atlanta and elsewhere against Asians were based as much on the gender of the victim as on their AAPI identity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lincoln does hereby proclaim our renewed and ongoing commitment to be a diverse and inclusive community free from racism so that all who live and work in and visit Lincoln feel welcomed. Be it further resolved that Lincoln strongly stands against hate, bias, or violence based on race, nationality, gender, disability, or religion, and we urge all residents to unite together in solidarity with our Asian American and Pacific Islander neighbors.
Thank you. Yes, Councilperson Christensen.
Well, in spite of some objections that this resolution is imperfectly worded, I do intend to support it. I believe that fear based on ignorance is the root of racism. I hope that this resolution can help remove some of the ignorance in Lincoln. Unlikely, we are unlikely to eliminate ignorance, but we must try.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Councilperson Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Councilwoman Raybold for bringing the resolution forward. This issue is personal for a lot of us. It is our relatives, it is our friends, it's people at the dais that we serve with, it's in our community, and to think otherwise is a false narrative. I will never understand how people like me who are white cannot recognize racism in our community. And we heard that today, and I'm sorry that that exists. And thank you to the testifiers that testified and support. I'm sorry that you experienced what you did when you moved to Lincoln, Mr. Irwin. It just reminds me how much work we have to do in our community. Lincoln has done a lot, but we must not become complacent. These conversations should not be difficult at all, and so we must do better. Everything is not okay in this city, and so we must move forward, and I am honored to support this very important resolution. Thank you very much.
Councilperson Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Councilwoman Raybold. I don't have to wait until there is a violent tragedy in our community to come forward and to say that hate should not be tolerated. I don't need to have a resolution, no, I don't, I do need to have this resolution. I'm sorry, I was so thrown by the testimony I heard invalidating the experience, the lived reality of Asian American residents in our community. I know that racism is in our community. I know that at the heart of our community, there are many, many people who want to stand in solidarity and to form a community which unites us, which looks at our differences and sees strength instead of difference, you sees diversity as something that we should love and embrace. And to hear folks come forward and say that these stories are not true or not important, or that a resolution is not needed, this is about leadership. This is about being the change we want our community to be, about modeling leadership which is compassionate and forward-thinking, and there is no way I could ever do anything but to vote completely in favor of this resolution. Hate should not be tolerated in any form.
Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
I just want to say that oftentimes, these incidents have gone unnoticed and unreported, and I certainly ask everyone out there to please open your heart, open your eyes, open your ears to these issues. People have shared with me that they've actually been spat on. People have shared with me that they've been in line in the grocery store and someone pretends to spit on them. That's very unnerving for people who least expect to have these type of experiences in our city. And sadly, they just go unreported. They just, like Mr. Yuan said, he has a very tough skin after 30 years, and so he's not nearly as affected by these incidents that have happened, that are real. So I think this resolution serves a purpose, to ask us to be more aware and open ourselves up to people who don't look like us, and listen to their stories. And when you ask them, share me your stories. How have you been treated? We learn, and that changes us profoundly forever, to be more open-minded and open-hearted to things that don't allow our city to grow and don't allow our city to be a welcoming place, that it has always been, and we can be better. So thank you all for coming to testify tonight. I think it was so very important that we hear your stories. Thank you for sharing them, and I thank my council members for supporting this resolution.
Councilperson Bowers.
I want to say thank you so much to the folks that came out to testify and support. That takes a lot of guts, and it takes a lot of courage to be able to share your story knowing that there are going to be people that are going to be speaking in opposition. I want to apologize for those of you that had to listen to folks speak in opposition invalidating what you have been through and what you're concerned about for your families and for your own safety. I will never understand how saying that we want to be an inclusive, welcoming community is divisive. It's something that we've heard multiple times over, that we're being divisive by saying that we're being inclusive and welcoming, and I will never understand that. And I will never understand people who say that just because they don't see it means it does not occur in our community. I will never understand that. So I'm incredibly proud of the folks that came out to testify, because when you come out to testify and share your stories despite the opposition, other people are watching, and you're being a beacon for other people in our community to know that one narrative is not the only narrative out there, and that there are people in our city who do care about you. So thank you so much. I'm really honored that you all took the time to come here and say your address and to say your names when this is happening in our city. So thank you so much.
Councilperson Shob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My yes vote will be my show of support for this. I don't think I can build on what my fellow councilpeople have said, so my yes vote will be my commitment and my vote of support.
Thank you. Anybody else? There's not much more that I could say, and I appreciate the passion and speeches by my fellow council members. So let's call the vote.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to ordinances, second reading.
Item 5A is an ordinance to temporarily extend the terms of certain City of Lincoln permits and licenses due to the COVID-19 pandemic by delaying expiration dates of certain permits, licenses, and registrations.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Scott Holmes. I manage the Environmental Health Division with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. We regulate food establishments and body art facilities throughout the community. As we did last year, we are recommending that the permits be delayed so that the fees do not have to be paid until a little bit later this summer, and we ask for your support for that relief that would be provided to our restaurants and food establishments and our body art establishments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Holmes? What was the date of this till goes to?
The permits would be due on July 31st.
Okay.
Yep. So for food establishments, it would move them from May 31st to July 31st. For the body art, it would go from June 30th to July 31st.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming down. Anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item? Seeing none, we can move on.
Item 5B is adopting the supplements to the Lincoln Municipal Code dated June 2020 and December 2020 as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code.
Anybody who would like to come forward on this item? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we can move on.
Item 5C is amendment to public safety quarter cent sales tax capital improvement
Thank you for coming.
Good evening. Pleasure to be here. With this, we're asking for this ordinance so we can move forward with the generators and fencing for fire stations 10, 12, and 16. With this transfer of funds, we'll be able to move that project forward.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Chief Finkler? Yes, Councilperson Washington.
Chief Finkler, thanks for coming down this evening. I have one question. When you finish the generators and the fencing on 10, 12, I'm 16, will there be any funds left in that pot?
Not for our use, but there will be potentially funds left over for, and the leftover funds, as I understand. as I understand it, will go to any radio system uses. But that will close out our portion of what we'll be using it for, for these fire stations.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? That was going to be one of mine, because it pretty much says it right here down to the dollar.
I have a question of finance. Have you got somebody here from finance?
We do have Michelle Selvage here who's over, she's kind of overseeing the funds.
Let's take a look here. I have a question then. So this money, while it's been sitting there for a while, has produced some interest. Where is that interest now and where is it going to go?
The interest is part of the resolution.
Okay.
So as of March 31st, the 38, I don't have it, thank you. The 38,839,484 is what was in the revenue portion for what we collected and any interest as of March 31st. So everything is appropriated out as of March 31st. Anything that we collect past that would go into the radio project for upgrades or anything that needs to be done there. And that's what the Oversight Committee approved in August of 2020.
So that interest will stay within the boundaries of the language from the ballot?
Correct.
Okay. That's it for me.
Okay, and you did say that the Public Safety Oversight Committee did approve this, correct?
Yes.
August 2020.
2020. Okay. Any other questions?
I do want, for clarification, could someone tell everybody in the public what CAD refers to in this case? It doesn't mean computer-aided design.
CAD drone?
Computer-aided dispatch. There you go, computer-aided dispatch.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to come forward to speak on this item at this time? Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. We can move on to the next item.
I'll be calling items 5D, 5E, and 5F together, approving the Argent Project Redevelopment Agreement between Argent Group Inc. and Illinois Corporation and the City relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of 14th and N Streets and adjacent rights-of-way in downtown Lincoln, and the related fiscal year 2020, 2021 CIP to authorize and appropriate $14,131, excuse me, $14,131,543 in TIF funds for the Argent Project redevelopment, and also the related issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Argent redevelopment project in an amount not to exceed the $14,131,543.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Marvin with the Urban Development. And I will make a correction, we'll try to round to smaller numbers so we don't have to go out. We're not including pennies in there, you know.
Yes, Mr. Marvin, could you give your address for the record?
My address is 550, oh, is that the new protocol?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. 555 South 10th Street.
South 10th Street, okay.
It's the first time I've testified under the new protocol. With me today is John Badami, who's with DLR, and I think he'd like to make a kind of a brief overview from an architectural perspective. The developer here intends to invest approximately $71 million, I'm rounding here, to design and construct an approximately 15-story multifamily residential building to include approximately 202 market-rate residential dwelling units, and structured parking to accommodate approximately 150 vehicles for the use and benefit of the tenants in the structure. They intend to acquire and prepare the site and complete with other right-of-way improvements and enhancements, including but not limited to the streetscape and alley improvements, facade enhancements, and energy enhancements. This project has gone through the typical city process, albeit somewhat delayed. On June 2nd, 2020, the Urban Design Committee reviewed the plans for this and approved them on unanimous vote. On June 10th, 2020, the Planning Commission reviewed Block 65, the plan amendment for this, and again, they approved it unanimously. On July 13th, 2020, this body reviewed and approved on a 7-0 vote, the plan amendment. The land that is being acquired did need to go through a surplusing process. So on August 3rd, 2020, the City Council did declare the 26,960 square feet that this building would sit on, on a 7-0 vote, as surplus. And lastly, we did go to Urban Design for them to review the streetscape plan, and they did review that and approved the streetscape plan. I would be happy to answer any questions and also will be available after to answer questions as well.
Do we have any questions for Director Marvin? Yes.
Mr. Marvin, you mentioned that this project will be 15 stories and have 202 market-rate units. So because it's such a big project of $71 million, there's a formula for some of those funds to be allocated in a, like a segregated account that goes towards affordable housing. So with a project this size, how much would actually be directed towards affordable housing?
Well, the city administration fee, good question, is $201,973.
$201,000, okay. And then is there a percentage of that that goes towards affordable housing or it's the total amount of $201?
The way the formula works is, in the biennium, the first $200,000 goes to cover administrative expenses, and then those amounts that come in after, during the biennium that are above the $200,000 go toward a CIP line item that you approve that goes towards affordable housing. Where we are in that process, I'm not sure, as where we've reached the cap and that these, all these dollars would go in, I'd have to check on that and I can get back to you.
That would be great, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. In the packet that's online, there isn't any streetscape renderings or designs, or is there? Maybe Mr. Badami will be able to show me both.
He might. I know John would have been at the Urban Design. One of the issues was that the building has an interest in a drop-off area in front of the building, and so there were some streetscape changes. I think John would be a little bit more current on what those changes would amount to.
I'll ask him. Yes, Counselperson Washington.
If I could just go back just a smidge on affordable housing, will there be any units in this building that are affordable?
No, and that's a good question. This particular project came in, we're trying to grandfather those that came in well ahead, and this project was long before we passed the Affordable Housing Action Plan. But as was mentioned, it will contribute funds that ultimately can roll into affordable housing. But on top of that, I mean, it does, I've spoken to this group many times about this, and I think the next project will have nuances that we can talk about on that as well. But I think that the downtown environment is a very diverse area for all different types of housing arrangements, and we're working very diligently on the Pershing Block that will provide 100 affordable units on that side as well.
Well, I appreciate that there is at least, I mean, one. No one should have to come back and follow a law that wasn't there when their project came forward, but then I am glad at least that there's funds going to affordable housing.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Marvin at this time? Thank you. Mr. Badami. Good evening, no, afternoon, evening, okay.
Good evening, Chair McGinnis and members of the council. John Badami, reside at 5909 Norman Road. So yes, very excited to give you a little overview of our project. I'm here on behalf of Argent Group, the developer. They send their apology that you could not make it here today through an abundance of caution with COVID, but certainly plans to be here in the very near future. First off, I'd like to talk about the massing study. So what you see here is the gray being the future parking garage for the city of Lincoln that's proposed. The white building would be the existing Sharp Building, and the yellow would be our new project. The blue areas that you see there would be structured parking that would be there for the residents, and the yellow would be, that'd be levels four through 15, would be the residences with an amenity deck that you see there at the southwest corner. So as Dan had mentioned, 202 units, about 304,000 square feet total. So here's a view of the building looking to the south and to the west. The facade material that we're looking at here would be an architectural precast concrete that would be unitized, that could be swung into place, so a very efficient system. And that would be both kind of the white color, buff-colored material, as well as the dark gray material as well. So we would use that material on the primary sides of the building that face the corner, and then we probably would go with a lesser material that we're looking at on the alley side, maybe an EFS or something that would require less cost. Here's a view showing the north elevation. We're, in our design, we're trying to be very conscious of the, of our grand neighbor, the Sharp Building. As you can see, we've got a base, middle, and top, very similar to the Sharp Building, we just have it in a more modern vocabulary that you see here. We are activating the street side of the building. There'll be the fitness area, there'll be a workspace or office space for the tenants, as well as the leasing offices. We are showing a rooftop amenity deck as well that will be used for the residences. So the east elevation, this would be the 14th Street side. You'd see our entry into our parking garage, which would be located here. This would be both entry and exit for the garage. Our main entry of the building then would also be on the 14th Street side for residences. Here's the ground floor plan of the building. There will be no basement in the building. We do have some et-grade parking that would be accessed through the alleyway. And then this ramp area here would ramp up to our garage levels, which would be on second and third floor. And then all the amenities at ground floor for the tenants, fitness, leasing office, et cetera, then would be on the ground floor. Moving up through the building, you see our typical garage floor for parking, and we can park approximately 170 cars in the garage. And then on the fourth floor, the amenity deck floor would be outside amenities for grilling and other outdoor uses, as well as a typical unit layout. We have approximately 16 units per floor. And then I think here to answer your earlier question, Richard, is our streetscape design, obviously wanting to enhance the streetscape with trees and planting areas. Very excited to be right next to the bike lane there to the north. And then our main entry for tenants would be here on the east side. Garage entry would be here. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Any questions at this time? Counselperson Washington.
I have a couple of questions. Mike, I have a couple of questions. You said there'd be 170 cars, parking, 170 parking spaces in your garage for cars? Does that include the surface plus the stories?
Yes, it's the surface plus the stories.
Surface, and then can you tell me a little bit about the first floor? Because it's going to be such a prominent building in our downtown area, and I love the idea that we're activating the streetscape there. But are there windows, like, you know, human-scale windows, or is it going to be a solid wall there on the sidewalk or at the sidewalk?
Yeah, if you look here, basically, we're looking at floor-to-ceiling glass all along the street side.
Okay.
So that would be both on the 14th Street and the N Street sides, it would be very visible and vibrant.
Thank you.
Looks like that first floor is a little taller?
It is a little taller, yes.
Okay, to kind of match up with the Sharp and their overhang and?
Correct.
Okay. My question about the streetscape was, are we losing any traffic lanes?
I guess, Richard, by traffic lanes, oh, as far as?
Yeah, down 14th Street.
No, the street and essentially the bike lane, as you see it today, will remain exactly the same.
Okay. And I appreciate you building your own parking. That's very important, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Badami? Okay, not seeing any, we'll move on. Is there anybody else like to come forward to speak on this item?
Thank you.
Would you, anybody else like to come forward? Any rebuttal? Probably not. Okay, nobody out there? Okay, we can move on to the next item, and I believe I will have to recuse myself for potential conflict of interest.
I'll call items 5G, 5H, and 5I together, approving the Gold's Building Redevelopment Agreement between Gold's Multifamily Partners LLC and the City relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 1023 and 1033 O Street and adjacent rights-of-way in downtown Lincoln, and the related fiscal year 2020, 21 CIP to authorize and appropriate $6,126,000 in TIF funds for the Gold's Building Redevelopment Project, and the related tax allocation bonds for the Gold's Building Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed $6,126,000.
Thank you. Again, Dan Marvin, 555 South 10th Street, I'm with the Urban Development Department. The project you have before you today is an old, large building. In fact, some, at one time I was told it's maybe as the largest combined square feet of any building in the state of Nebraska, but it's certainly up there. The developer intends to invest approximately $50 million to redevelop the Gold's Building at approximately 1033 O Street into 37,700 square feet of commercial on the first floor and approximately 180 multifamily dwelling units on the upper floors, approximately 40,775 square feet of storage/commercial space in the basement. The redeveloper improvements will also include rehabilitation of the historic facade features of the Gold's Building. The redeveloper will demolish the dilapidated structure at 1023 O Street, otherwise known as St. George and the Dragon, and for an outdoor space. And the project will also help fund, design, construct, and install right-of-way and streetscape along in the area, as well as provide funds to demolish and clear the old police station at 233 South 10th Street. I put the map on here. This would be the Gold's Building here, and this is the building that I think would be demolished, and they would? demolished and they would allow them to put windows on this side of the building. The areas that are outlined are all dashed areas that are typical when we bring forward a plan amendment, but what's a little unusual is this is the area where the old police station is and this is, the dashed areas identify areas where tax increment financing can be, can be expended. So what we would expect is to be able to do some street scape around the building and also have additional funds to demolish the, the old police station as we try to transition that half block into a transit center and move the bus transfer station over to that This project has gone before the Historic Preservation Commission on February 18th, 2021. That was a vote of seven to nothing. On March 3rd, 2021, the planning commission heard the plan amendment and again, they approved that on a seven to nothing vote. We took the plan amendment to this body on March 29th and this was approved on a six to nothing vote as well. With me today is Andrew Willis with, has done the legal work on this with Klein Williams and then also is Jeff McMahon, the developer. And I'd be happy to answer some questions and I think they'd like to be able to come up and provide some additional testimony as well.
Does anyone have any questions for Director Marvin at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring up the developers.
Good evening. Andrew Willis, 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900. So the plan here, this project really, I mean, there's one, I guess I break it into three parts. One main part being the renovation of the Golds Building, approximately 325,000 square feet of building there. It'll be, you know, internal, a pretty, you know, complete overhaul, approximately $50 million in investment in the construction renovation. Currently that building is about 60% vacant with the remaining, really the, the remaining tenant not, you know, not planning to stay. So it would be completely vacant. It needs the, it needs the work for any, really any viable use. Developers' plan is to convert it into first floor commercial and about 180 apartments above that. So that's again, the, the main purpose, retaining the, the Golds Building facade and kind of from a look and feel be the same other than potentially some windows for those residential units. If you recall, there's not a lot of windows on a couple sides of that building. But other than that, really retaining the, the existing historical facade. Then the adjacent building, you know, the 1033 O Street is vacant, really uninhabitable. It's under contract and it really needs, I mean, I'd say beyond substantial work to be, to be inhabitable. We figured out the best use is really demo this, make it a little pocket park, open space for, to, to really benefit this project and really, you know, give them a nice, nice open space amenity downtown for, for the residents. And then the third piece is the, is helping to fund the potential demolition of that police station and the relocation and construction of the new bus transfer station. From a, and again, so 180 units, residential units is, is the primary, primary goal here. From a TIF funding, again, this will help fund the street scape improvements around, around the Golds Building, the demolition of the police station for the new bus transfer station and then a portion, a portion of the site acquisition costs in order to make this project work. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have and then also Jeff McMahon is here and can probably answer some more, he might have some more information as well on the more specific, specific details of the project.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Willis? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming forward this evening. Let's talk about parking.
Yes.
All right. So tell me, where were the residents?
The redevelopment agreement allows for 250 parking stalls in the, the parking garage across the street. That's 220 for the residential units, which equates about one per bedroom. So we've been, we've had a lot of discussions with city staff on parking and, and that is feasible. There is, there's availability, so they would have, I mean, there's essentially a, they'd have the right to have those parking spots reserved for the, for the residents. And then, so that's 220 of the stalls and then there's, there would be 30 that would be available for the commercial space to be determined later. But there, there is adequate space in that parking garage and, and that's laid out in the redevelopment agreement.
And when you say that there's enough for one per bedroom, is it by right then? If you rent a two-bedroom, you get two spaces or do you have to?
You would have the right to reserve it through the normal city process, but you'd, you'd be top of the, you'd essentially, right when you move, I think it's, you have the right to reserve when you move in, when we start this project. Otherwise you move to the top of the list, so you'd have a preference in order to make sure those residents have an ability to, to obtain parking.
All right.
If they don't need the two spots, obviously not, you know, in that, in that situation, then they wouldn't have to get two spots, there'd be other spots available.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions for Mr. Willis? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thanks for your time to hear this, about this project. I'll try not to be too long, but I wanted an opportunity?
Name and address, please.
Yeah, Jeff McMahon.
Thank you.
JDM Real Estate Solutions. I'm at 15210 Catalina in Leewood, Kansas.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Thought I'd put a picture of the, the Golds Building up there so everyone can remember what it looks like. I just thought I'd introduce myself just a little bit. First off, I'm a, born and raised in Lincoln and unfortunately I remember back shopping in this building almost. I haven't quite figured out if I remember going back when it was Golds or if it had turned to Brandeis. But I had, I had read that it, it went from Golds to Brandeis in 1964, so it's right around there. So you can probably start doing your math and figure out about where I stand on that. The Golds, I don't know if you remember, it was founded in 1915 and then this building here was built in, this corner tower building was built in 1924 and it was added to in, I'm sorry, yes, it was built in 1924, it was added to in 1929. And again, they expanded to the south in 1947 and again in 1951. So as the department store got better and better and more activity, they continued to expand to the south to what it is right now, which is a pretty big building that, somewhere around 300,000 square feet, depending on how you calculate it, because it's got a big basement as well. But I think some of the things I wanted to point out to you is that department stores aren't happening anymore and this will never turn into a department store again. And so we have the, the difficult task of deciding what is it going to become? You've got options of saying maybe class A office space, but in this environment, I'm not sure you're going to see a whole lot of new office product out on the market, certainly not to fill 300,000 square feet in downtown Lincoln. And so, you know, we, we feel there is a strong market for a mixed-use project with the first floor being office and commercial, probably more office than retail, which is why we want to reserve some of those parking spots for the office employees for when that does happen. But the, the difficult task that we have is turning a building that was designed as a department store into a multifamily project. And the most specific challenge is going to be the south elevation, the west elevation. I do have a picture of that. So if you recall, this is the 1951 edition and I can only surmise that the architect at that time was being told by his client that it's a southern orientation and therefore we don't want too many windows because we don't want it to, the, the sun shining in on the product. So the south and the west elevations are pretty much blank walls. They were blank walls when it was first built. In, in the 1980s, when it became the Golds Galleria, they, they did pop some windows in there, but certainly not enough to make it a, a successful multifamily project. So we are now having discussions with the State Board of Historic Preservation and, and we're trying to get their acceptance and what, what we think is a very reasonable solution to add more windows to the south and the west. That has been, that recommendation has been sent down to the, the Federal Office of, of Parks and Recreation and we hope to get some positive news on, on that and the ability to get historic tax credits for this, for this building. So I would tell you that it's also expensive to turn a, a building of this size and, and history into a, to go from a department store into a multifamily project. And so the historic tax credits are very important to be able to, to pull that off. I don't know if you're going to have any other questions, but we are going to be a high-end, we're going to be challenging the upper end in, in rents. It's going to be a, a top-of-the-market project, lots of amenities. We're going to be able to get about anywhere from 180 to 200 luxury units into the building as well as the first floor retail and commercial uses. We will have storage in the basement, which we think is a great use also. We have freight elevators that go right down there. It'll be for our residents as a priority, but we'd like to also make that available to any other downtown office uses that want to have some additional storage. So that's, that's the Golds in a nutshell. I make myself available for questions and leave it at that.
Are there any questions to Mr. McMahon? Councilwoman Washington?
Could you talk a little bit? I keep turning my microphone off. Would you talk a little bit about the pocket park?
Yes. One thing that's very rare in a project like this in an urban environment would be to have amenities for the, for the residents, a place to walk your dog because we want to be pet-friendly. And so we feel it's important. In fact, that was one thing that was going to be proposed when it was going to be a hotel as well, because the building next door to the west is really in disrepair and we feel it does two things for us. It allows us by taking the building down to have an amenity park back there for the residents, maybe a hot tub, picnic tables, barbecue and what have you. But also it allows us to open up sunlight into the west side of the building where, without getting control of that building and taking it down, it, it really messes up our, our floor plan so that you can't get the units to face west and your unit count goes way down and it makes it very unfeasible. So that's, that's the, the intent of the pocket park. It wouldn't be public. In fact, we want to make sure it's secure to the residents.
Are there any further questions for Mr. McMahon? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, would someone get our honorable chair?
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to move on to the next item? Or is that the last? We need to vote.
Nope.
No?
Just, just public hearings.
Those are all public hearings for the ordinances? We need to move on to third readings, right? 6A. Madam Clerk?
Item 6A, authorizing the issuance of the General Obligation Highway Allocation Fund Bond Series 2021 in amount not to exceed $15.75 million introduced by Washington. Still moved. Second?
Moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Do we have any comments or questions? Yes.
I do have a comment. You know, I have objected to this during the budget discussions. I still have the same concerns, however, I think we must prioritize street maintenance and construction, so I will support it at this time.
Any other?
I'm kind of the same way. What I've noticed is our city does have a lot of money. Hate to say it, but I think we have a lot of money in our accounts currently. We finished with an extra seven, eight million dollars over last year. Most of that was that our sales taxes has been good, our property taxes have been really robust, I want to say, so. And we've ended up with over 7 million actual unassigned money this year and a $13.6 million increase in our balance and our fund balances this year. So I just think we need to be, if it's so important to start spending money on infrastructure and other projects, we probably should be doing that. On the other hand, we've done a great job on expenses. We kept them down and that's what we were budgeting when we were going along. The idea was to keep our expenses down and we've done a good job of that. So it's a catch 22, but this, this is a good thing. It's a good time to spend this money and get it in the bank and spend it on the roads. And this is something that we approved back in this fall. All this is, is allowing our finance director and them to go to market on these bonds as soon as they can or as soon as they feel like it's prudent. So I'll be in favor of this. Long way around saying that, but. Okay, anybody else like to say anything? Okay, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6B is an ordinance authorizing and approving a lease purchase transaction with Union Bank and Trust Company for the issue, sale, and delivery of certificates of participation with a principal amount not to exceed $21,700,000 introduced by Washington. Still moved. Second?
Been moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or thoughts on this? Yes, Councilperson Raybold.
Yes, I, I am going to support this because these certificate of participation allow us to take on six critical community projects. And the thing that I get so excited about is just the interest rate that we hope to be able to secure for this. And it's at the lowest imaginable rate that you can possibly get and of 1.99% and that is exciting. Some of these projects are, have been deferred maintenance. I think the funniest line that we heard, "It's time to pay the piper, but actually let's fix the irrigation pipes." So it, for the, the irrigation out at Pioneer's Park because it can't continue to be replaced or fixed any longer. It has to be completely replaced. The Air Park Recreation Center, the residents in that area have been certainly very patient and have put up with a very dilapidated but much-loved and much-used building and it's time. It is time to reinvest in a community that it keeps growing, which is exciting to see in our city, an area that is seen to be very popular with great schools and a new school happening as well. And the senior center, our, our commitment to our veterans is, it's a wonderful facility and a, a commitment to creating more opportunities for our seniors. Face it, we're all getting older and the older generation is increasing. Sidewalk improvements, I can't tell you how many phone calls I get about sidewalks and we have a backlog. It's, it's like, it seems like a never-ending backlog, but this will allow us to divert another $1 million to really take a great stab at getting that. And of course, who doesn't love to hate our snow that we get in our city, but we have to do what we can to keep our roads clear and, and keep people able to get to school and to get to work. So all these projects, and I forgot to talk about streetlights, that makes sense to convert them to LED lighting. Every single business that I know of in our city has embraced LED lighting conversion. Why? It saves you money in the short term and you continue to reap the benefits in the long term. So these are all great projects that we should be taking on. We have the wherewithal. We have the, the financial wherewithal that most municipalities would envy. We have a AAA bond rating and I asked very clearly these questions. Will this increase in our debts have any impact whatsoever? And they said, no, because we have a AAA bond rating, these, these certificates of participation are, are secured by the, the full financial wherewithal of our city as, has other certificates of participation in the past. So this is a great thing to move forward on and I look forward to seeing a lot of happy constituents out there with these projects that are long overdue and this is the best time to borrow money.
Thank you. Councilperson Christiansen?
Well, in the past I have opposed cops borrowing.
Well, in the past, I have opposed COPS borrowing. However, at this point in time, the low, very low cost of borrowing and the important projects that are planned with this money, with all that, I'm persuaded to support this ordinance, especially for the benefit of the veterans. That's a very important project.
Thank you. Yes, Councilperson Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So two of my favorite things to talk about are Airpark Rec Center and Victory Park. When I was elected, I declared that Airpark Rec Center to all of you was one of my priorities, though it was, been worked on way before my time on the council and the colleagues that came on when I did. So I'm so excited and want to thank the neighbors for their patience. It's been a long time coming. A lot of people have endured soggy carpet and other unsafe conditions to cross the street out in Airpark. And just this weekend, if your name was Josh, you got to have a lot of fun out in Airpark. Maybe some of you were there. So I'm super excited about the funding mechanism that we are going to vote on for the new rec center in Airpark. So thank you to Parks and Rec and everybody that had a part in that. And Victory Park, thank you to Randy Jones, who I see at the back of the room, Director of the Aging Partners for all of your work in getting this far. Director Jones, many people have, it's a great, great thing to be doing. I got to work with Director Jones when I was Executive Director at the Seniors Foundation. And so who knew, here we are six or seven years later, seeing it over the finish line. So it will be a great blend of services. And what excites me a lot about that project, serving seniors, serving veterans, and that not only for Lincoln and Nebraska, but this project and this move of the Aging Partners Department and Senior Services will bring Lincoln national attention as I think, as a one-campus, one-stop center for so many services that are yet to come. And that will include medical buildings and it will, it just blends so nicely with the veterans housing that is already on the campus, so we could talk about that all day long as well. But this is good funding. There are great projects coming and kudos to everybody that's done the heavy lifting. So clearly I will be voting to support this funding as well. Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? Yes, Councilperson Chobe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all. I want to start with thanking Councilwoman Raybold for going through the list of projects. You know, there's six projects spread out all over the city, different groups. This is another example of the city of Lincoln trying to meet the needs of all its diverse communities and making sure that we spend your money wisely. That's it.
Okay. Anybody else at this time?
You're here.
No, I'm kind of in the same boat. I'm not a big fan of using the COPS financing, certificates of participation, but these numbers that we're getting and the way their finance package is put together, it's hard not to go ahead and fulfill some of these needs at this point.
Yeah, listening to the community and fulfilling their needs.
Correct.
We're listening.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anybody else at this time? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Thank you.
Item 7, excuse me, item 6C, amending the capital improvement program to include the Aging Department Victory Park project to increase the appropriation of lease proceeds for the Parks and Recreation Department, Airpark Recreation Center, replace facility project, and to increase the appropriation of lease proceeds for Parks and Recreation Department Golf Course Irrigation Systems Project, introduced by Washington. Still moved. Second?
Been moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Yes, Councilperson Christensen.
This is a good thing.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6D is comprehensive plan conformance 21005, application of the City of Lincoln Aging Department for proposed amendment, the City of Lincoln's capital improvement program by adding the Victory Park project for fiscal year 2020, 2021 to 2025, 2026 on the property generally located at 600 South 70th Street, introduced by Washington. Still moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? I think we've had her say. Please call, yes.
This is a great thing. There's nothing wrong with this project, there's only good.
Yes. Okay. Please call the roll.
Chobe?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6E is change of zone 21009, application of Eric Schaefer for a change from B4 Lincoln Center Business District, I1 Industrial District to B4 Lincoln Business District, I1 Industrial District with landmark overlay on property generally located at 300 South 7th Street and 700 M Street, introduced by Washington. Still moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Christensen. Any comments or questions? Another good project. Okay, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Our resolutions, first reading is item 7A. Our pending list are items 8A, 8B, and 8C.
Okay. And before we adjourn, this is the last meeting of the month, so we'll have an open mic. Anybody can come forward to speak on any item that's not listed on our agenda or to be on our agenda. As you remembered, as I announced early, first up, the council shall require any member of the public addressing the council to identify themselves, including address and name of the organization they're representing by such person unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of that individual. So, and you have five minutes to speak on any item. So those wishing to come forward would be willing to come forward at this time?
Good evening. I'm Roy Helm, 2750 South 13th Street. I am really happy to be here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity and part of it is, well, it's nice and cool in here. A little hot outside, but I don't quite know where to begin. It's been an interesting time and I'm somewhat taken aback by decision of our governor to say that the state of Nebraska stands with Georgia as they move forward with their voter suppression, which is at best racist. I'm hopeful that we as a community don't agree with that. It's just, it's just wrong. And I know that this body is, doesn't have any control of that, nor do you have any control over our governor again, coming forward and declaring that Nebraska is a Second Amendment sanctuary state. And I'm still trying to wrap my head around what that means. I mean, are we now going to be a sanctuary for unregistered, undocumented firearms and weapons? I mean, I don't understand what that means. I don't know what the fear is about gun regulation. I don't think anyone is trying to take any, infringe on Second Amendment rights. We don't need assault weapons in people's hands with mega magazines. They're just, they're weapons of war and destruction and they have no place in society. There's opportunities for gun ranges to have them for rent. I don't know. I don't get it. But maybe, maybe Lincoln could take a look back and look at a chapter in history and look at Dodge City, Kansas, back in the days of Wyatt Earp and Bat Masterson, when they outlawed carrying firearms in city limits on the north side of town. The south side, it was all, you could carry whatever you wanted to, they had lots of violence. But on the north side of town, the only firearms that came in were, as I understand it, were from law enforcement or if they were smuggled in, and they had very little violence. So go figure. It can work. People had to check their guns in when they came into town and when they left, they could get them back. And maybe, maybe that's something that we could consider in our city. Just a thought. But, you know, I think about Dodge City and, you know, I think about, you know, the Long Brand Saloon and Gunsmoke and Matt Dillon and Miss Kitty and those characters and, you know, how we might look at those characters today. I mean, you know, Miss Kitty, I mean, she had kind of a deep voice and wore an awful lot of makeup and I don't know. I mean, being diverse. But anyway, life is always going to be a challenge, but life is wonderful. And we do have our issues in this city and I'm confident that we can work through them and work through them together. You know, once we get through this heat spell, this July weather and the end of April, I'm hoping for a beautiful spring. It's just, it's a fascinating time of year. And to follow up on a comment that I made at the last open session, we have gotten a puppy. I've got little bite marks to prove it. So that's proving to be a challenge all its own and it's a wonderful, wonderful situation to be in. And I want to thank you and our clerks for your time and the energy you expend. So thank you. And I forgot to mention at the onset, but I'm still not a candidate for city council, but I have voted. And I hope everyone else does too. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward at this time?
I can get them out of here. Once again, I am Laura Rousher. And I'm sorry that speaking earlier, I didn't have the resolution in front of me. I couldn't find it ahead of tonight. And I felt as though after I spoke that I came off on the wrong foot. I felt demonized afterwards because I do see that, I see that our town really does work. Our Lincoln really does want to be a loving community. And that's what I have experienced in all areas of Lincoln. And yes, I know some people do feel disenfranchised. Certainly, we white people can feel that way too in today's society. But that's not what I'm here to talk about now, what I planned on talking about. And it was so fun to listen to Mr. McMahon talking about the Golds Building because I remember shopping there. I've been in Lincoln most of my life. I am a wife of 53 years and counting, mother of four children and 20 grandchildren. I've seen many changes, many changes in our city. However, the changes that I have witnessed since our mayor and the four of you who were elected along with her committee members and our handpicked health director, Nurse Pat Lopez, who is a nurse and not a doctor, but one who doesn't go along with the state doctors' suggestions about our health issues, yet continues to get $14,000 a month income to keep us in bondage to masks. And I see that all of you are wearing yours tonight. My generation has endured many other health crises, the polio epidemic, the H1N1 flu, many outbreaks in variants of every year's flu, but none with the mask shutdowns and restrictions that this has had. Here's a hint for those of you who are listening online and watching this tonight. This is COVID-19. There's been 18 other strains of COVID. And if you're listening to me, you've survived them all. My husband and I had COVID earlier this year. According to statistics, in our age, we should have died. We didn't. It was the flu. It wasn't fun to get through, but we did. We took what our physician suggested for prophylactics and we made it just fine at home. Not everyone does. I have friends and family that really had to go through more, but the truth of the matter is, from the very beginning, we weren't treating it correctly. The handouts that I brought with me tonight have proven facts. There are doctors that have cured over 10,000 patients, not losing one even in their 90s using proven methods. So we need not walk around in fear. I just would hope and pray that you would listen and at least look at the information for yourselves. I name you every day, praying for each and every one of you. I do care. And what I've heard this evening coming down here, my very first time, I was excited. You guys are doing a really good job and I appreciate it so much. I'm just worried that you're not using statistics to stop keeping us all locked up in a way. People going outside in the sunshine with masks on. It's talked about in those papers. Please consider getting rid of the masks, consider going back to normal living. Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Could you give us your address or did you give it to us the first time?
I gave it to you the first time and I've got it written back there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. My name is Sean Truckee, 4925 Thomas Brook Lane. And for the record, those of you that mischaracterized me earlier, you know exactly what you did. Two weeks ago, I stated that Lincoln was now a permanent mask city. It appears that could still be the case as reaching 70, the 75% injection rate is going to be very difficult since the anti-science Health Department refuses to include those with natural immunity. They know this is dead wrong, but it serves their purpose of again moving the goalposts. When even arbitrary risk dial based on many false positive test results shows that the COVID threat is nearly gone here, the Health Department needed a new metric that they could use to justify the continuation of the mask mandate. Injection compliance is just what they were looking for. Masks were never about contagion control, they were always about human control, a tool to break people down and force compliance. Implemented through fear and intimidation, the plan has worked all too well. The proof is that those who have recovered from COVID and those injected still have to mask up in public. Further proof is that our kids are still in masks all day, every day. Children were never at risk and were not a major vector of infection. The data could not be clearer. Children under the age of 18 have a .0003% chance of dying of COVID. They are far more likely to die in a car accident on the way home from school, get struck by lightning, or die from suicide. And now with every teacher wanting an injection having received one, there is no medical justification whatsoever to continue this policy. Our mayor, Health Department, schools, and medical community have had, have long had a sick obsession to keep our kids in masks wherever they go and whatever they do, making their daily lives as miserable as possible. And you all- And you all, our elected voice of the people in this city, have stood by and let it happen. I don't care what flip-flopper Fauci said yesterday, or what the corrupt and incompetent CDC said today. We elected the seven of you to direct public policy in this city. Why is it that jurisdictions all over the state and nation defy Fauci and the CDC and yet somehow are just fine? Now though, the end game for all the compliance training is in sight. Masks were a warm-up for the injection compliance. Our Health Department has now decreed, to private businesses no less, that if you want to return to normal, everyone must be injected in your office. The overreach here is breathtaking and the ramifications are sweeping. We now have a, will have a two-class society in Lincoln. This is being done on purpose to force compliance with their injection goals. The message is clear, comply, or we will continue to make your life miserable and you will not be welcome in society. How far is the mayor and Health Department willing to take this? At what point will we have to show our health passport in Lincoln to gain entry to any public space? How many injections will be enough? Will the city council stand by as it has done for months and let this happen to our city? And the scary thing is, the Health Department is pursuing their injection goals no matter the consequences. Just the reported numbers in the U.S., which may only be ten percent of actual numbers, show over three thousand deaths and around seventy thousand adverse reactions, yet we are constantly told how safe these injections are. And I think we all know people that have had a serious reaction to these injections, haven't we? Let's not kid ourselves, these injections are the largest medical experiment in the history of the world. They're not a vaccine despite being called one, that is a fact, and they are only available under emergency use authorization. By federal law, they can only be used when there is an actual emergency and only when there are no effective alternate treatments available. We do not, we do not have an emergency any longer, and despite our medical community doing everything it could last year to block effective treatments for COVID patients, most of those treatments are actually now available. It must be said that the actions of the Health Department and the medical community at large, pushing these treatments to anyone, but especially high school kids at their schools, is one of the most reckless and dangerous things I have ever seen. This is not data-driven, because we already know the data and kids are not at risk. Anyone recommending an experimental treatment to high schoolers where the long-term effects are clearly not known is beyond irresponsible. Tragically now though, even our medical community has become thoroughly politicized. Look, I don't come here every two weeks because I enjoy it, but because people need to hear something besides the propaganda the mayor and the Health Department dish out on a weekly basis. Those of you that continue to put partisan politics and blind allegiance to progressive ideology ahead of the well-being of this city, especially our children, deserve to be removed from office. I trust the voters in this city. I trust that the voters understand that you're dereliction of duty and make the needed changes, starting next month. Otherwise, Lincoln will rapidly devolve into another failed leftist city like those we see on the news every single day. The choice is clear, Lincoln. Choose wisely.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak at this time? Good evening.
Evening. It's been a while. Ellie Sampson, 116 Nebraska Street. I'm really glad that they all went because I'm going to build on what they had to say. But first of all, I'm going to direct something over here because you made the comment about people sharing the experience of being spit upon. I don't think you realize that those of us who choose to breathe fresh air and choose not to wear the mask are also spit upon. And when you notify LPD of such things, do you understand that they say, "It's nothing we can do"? So, I think that you should probably take a look at the division and at the divisive nature that you all have put onto the city. But I'm here, I had a speech prepared, but, but I'm not going to give it, because what this chamber needs right now, what this city needs is the Holy Spirit. So I'm going to pray you all out with the last five minutes of this meeting, and I am going to call down the power of the Holy Spirit because it's way past time that you all had the scales of your heart and the scales of your eyes and the scales of your ears removed. I'm sick and tired of watching the evil just inch in and inch in and itch in. The reason that God hasn't come back yet is because he has given you every opportunity to turn from the error of your ways. He is coming to this battlefield. He is going to remove that sword of judgment, and once it's out, it's not going back in. So you have the choice. Are you going to continue to rubber stamp everything that comes down from the evil? Because it doesn't come from Larian. It comes from way above her, and we all know that, and you all know that. It is evil. And I am on fire. And the fire inside of me is stronger than the fire that God will rain down on all of you because it's the Holy Spirit. He used to open the earth and swallow the evil people. He used to rain down hailstorms and sulfur, and you all are lucky that he doesn't do that. I don't know what your faith is. I don't know what anyone's faith is in this chamber, but it's clear that it's not Holy Spirit-driven. It's clear that none of you have the discernment or the humility to answer for what you've been putting people through. All it takes is an apology and to say, "I was wrong." You have the right to breathe fresh air. You have the right to shop. You have the right to travel. You have the right to live your life. Your children have the right to go to school and hug their friends and not feel like their friends are going to get them sick, or that they're going to get their friends sick. That they have the right to be children. God, I'm just calling you down right now, and I am pulling your Holy Spirit into this chamber because it's been gone for too long. And there are people who will say, "Well, I, I can't separate, I can't bring my faith into the politics." That is what this country needs. This country needs Jesus, because he's coming back. And he is not going to take kindly to the fact that you bowed down to false gods, that you bowed down to idols, because those masks on your face, they're idols. They will not add a moment to your life because the moments of your life have been written since before they began, the moments of my life and your life and Grandma's life. A mask isn't going to add one. A social distancing isn't going to add one. A vaccine sure as heck isn't going to add one. But you worshiping those is certainly going to guarantee that your eternity is unpleasant and you're getting a warning call. That's what this is. Because when you love someone, when you have the Holy Spirit and the power of God in you, you can't not warn the people who are still lost. And that's what I'm here for today, because you all are lost. And you're taking this great city down with you, this great nation down with you. The Holy Spirit moves in strange ways. It calls certain people to certain things, and I am not a biblical scholar, I am not a preacher, but I am a Christian who knows that on the day of my judgment, I will get to stand before him and I will get to say, "I wasn't lukewarm for you, Lord. I stood up when you told me to go warn those people that I quite honestly have had hateful feelings towards for a long time." But I'm not called to hate. I'm called to love. And when you love someone, you discipline them and call it out when they need it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward at this time? Yes, maybe?
How's it going? Jimmy Light, fight the good fight, 402-890-5462. Give me a call if you're looking for me. I came here today, man, I sustained a back injury from UPS and it re-herniated the disc in my back, so I was kind of out for a little bit there. But I appreciate everyone that's came up here from this city. I think there's a lot of, it's a pretty diverse place, and I see that everyone's trying their best, and that's what truly matters. I just wanted to say, I'm here on behalf of Free Earners Jackson. I feel like we need to keep remembering that that takes ultimate priority regardless of what we see on the media, Comcast, is that the reality is, we have an innocent man that keeps having to reside in a cage that he doesn't belong in. And I also came to see if you guys read my book, or the book, not my book, but the book I provided for you guys about three months ago. I don't know if you still had a copy, because I think this will really shed some light on the legality of our monetary system and that the Federal Reserve note doesn't actually reflect your value. And we're all part of that. We're all the peons, right? Down here, trying to get funding from some fictitious credit system? And I've been racking my head, like, what is the solution to this beast? Right? Well, I noticed in the paper, we got a new Senator, Bo Star, and I see we have new council members coming up here to take the reins or continue. And I would invite everyone to get into cryptocurrency. It's a solution to where you can take your sovereign freedom back and create, create the, create your own belief system, the other, and that's basically all that, you know, a ration ticket is, it's just a belief system. Doesn't have to be backed by gold or anything any longer, but we do need an honest one with honest board members. And I believe HEX, H-E-X dot com, Hex Cryptocurrency, removes that human aspect of trusting this entity that's never been audited, never been, you know, it's just a blind trust fall. No one's audited the Federal Reserve or the IRS, but they can put a gun to our head and put us in jail for not paying some tax. We don't actually know that it goes to rebuild infrastructure, you know? So I believe that's just a simple solution that we can bring to, bring to the light. And yeah, um, thank you for everyone that's came up here. Oh, and my heroes, Mike's Towing, and yeah, that was a good one. Big ups to Mike's Towing. Also, Jazari Qual, big ups to you, sir. I think we got off on the wrong foot. If we had a decent conversation, I believe that our values would align pretty well. I like that you value news and media and production. And to Kiri Kay, Kyrie, she checked me on my professionalism, and I believe, yeah, I ain't perfect, but I am good at owning my shadow and integrating love. I would like to, like to think, and yeah, I couldn't tell, you know? Couldn't read the vibes in the room. Thought it was a circus. And I can't tell if y'all want satire, y'all want, you know, honesty, truth? Can't tell if y'all are being serious or joking? So that's to you, Kiri Kay. I appreciate you. And that's all I got today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you write down your address first, or would you want to give it to us?
Uh, the phone number is great. Phone number, if you call me, then I will definitely give you my address. But I had never had anyone call me. Gave out my phone number and address the first time. Go back and look through the videos. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else at this point?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say, remember the golden rule and I move for adjournment.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
We stand adjourned.